Good evening. Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting Tuesday, September 12th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the McKinnon Council chambers relative to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, and for the benefit of the public, this meeting is being recorded by both video and audio methods. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you who think I was disrespectful in not standing up to pledge allegiance to the flag, I managed to sprain my ankle really badly, but I gotta say Harrington Hospital took excellent care of me. Roll call.
Carla de la Cruz Davila.
Present.
Kathy La Piori.
Present.
Andrew Murch.
Present.
Erin DeMello.
Present.
Martina Shea.
Present.
John Shaw.
Present.
Steve Kabinsky is excused.
We have some minutes today to examine and approve of. As you know, we don't vote on them, but we do get to make any comments or changes. I must say that we have somebody new doing our minutes, and they're doing a very lovely job. The July 11th reorganization meeting. Any comments?
Chairman Chair, my last name on Section B, it has two L's, and it's just one.
Someday, we're gonna get you right. Okay. Anything else?
Yes. I believe Steve Kabinsky nominated me under letter B.
You believe what?
That for the nominations, I believe Steve Kabinsky nominated me.
Oh, okay. Andrew?
In Section B, the second time my name appears is missing an L in truffle, or we could just remove the truffle entirely for easier keeping. Either way, it's still my name.
Whichever you choose, that's your call.
To drop it would be most preferred.
What?
To drop it would be most preferred.
Excellent. That's the way we've been using your name all through the minutes for the last couple of years, so it would make sense. Any other comments on the reorg? Nope.
Can we accept those with the addition?
We don't vote, so we don't make a motion to accept, or we just, we can make any corrections that are appropriate. They spelled my name correctly. Okay, July the 11th, 2023, the regular minutes. Carla, did they get your name correctly this time?
They did.
Okay. No, it's, it's, those things matter. Those things matter. No comments? Okay. The August 8th minutes. Hmm? Oh, I'm sorry. I've been told I was going too fast. I will sit quietly and allow people time to read. Okay, the August. Anybody have any comments on the August minutes? Tom?
Also.
Citizens Forum. Do anybody in the audience have anything that they would have liked to address the school committee on this evening? If you have something that you would like to address the school committee, please come up and to the dais, and we'll tell, we'll tell, we'll tell you step by step what to do. Okay. Okay. Are you all together, or do you want to do this one by one?
We can do it all at once.
Okay, whichever, whichever is convenient for you.
They want us to do it together.
They want to do it together. Fine, that's perfectly fine. Okay, you do all have to give us your name and your address, and say them clearly so that we can enter them into the record.
Okay. My name is Naya Jela Ortiz, and I live at 28 Pleasant Street.
Okay. Why don't you all do your names and addresses, and then you can speak.
My name is Adelis Colomantene, and I live in 61 Garder Street.
Could you pull the microphone down just a little bit?
We can't hear, so if you want to put the mic down, yeah, perfect.
There you go.
My name is Adelis Colomantene, and I live in 61 Garder Street.
Thank you.
My name is Eva Tibbetts. I live at 38 Willow Lane in Southbridge, Massachusetts.
My name is Aracelis Escalante, and I live at 18 Franklin Terrace, Southbridge, Mass.
My name is Omaira Campos. I am a parent of a student of the Southbridge High School. I live at 28 Pleasant Street, Southbridge, Mass.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Now you, now you may speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Naya Ortiz. I'm a junior at Southbridge High School. I am also a high honors student. I am also involved in many extracurricular activities, and I also play sports. My experience at Southbridge High School has not been the best. I would like to talk and also represent my classmates in this speech. Southbridge is a diverse community. We have many students who come from good backgrounds, but also many students who come from lots of trauma. I was sent to that student support center because I rolled my eyes. I was overwhelmed and having a bad day. In that instance, I was extremely overwhelmed and couldn't process my feelings. The teacher inside the student support center tried to come to my desk and help me regulate my emotions based off my history, and he yelled at the teacher, embarrassing her, and told her, "Stop engaging with any conversation with her," and made me feel hopeless and like I was in a juvenile detention center. I completely broke down and couldn't function. I would like to speak about another incident. I returned to school after a couple days being out because I was uncomfortable to be near Mr. House. I witnessed a female walk into class, and Mr. House was behind the female, ran up to her. He yelled across at her across the hallway and to get her attention, again embarrassing her, and she, she had, she had said closely she didn't feel comfortable with him because he was following her extremely close. He said, "Go to the student support center, you are being disrespectful." The issue that I have is that students are not being respected. He's pushing all the students' buttons to show he wants to be almost the Hitler of Southbridge High School. We do not have any, any ambition or any excitement to attend Southbridge High School. We need help and ASAP. Please help the students of Southbridge High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so if you guys hear me start this, because I'm nervous, but good afternoon. My name is Adelis Colomantene, and I am a junior at Southbridge High School. I am an AP student who thrives to do the best I can in school, and to grow up and to become someone. The only time I got, I got a lower grade than AP was when the teachers were quitting because of horrible administration. The whole class got, got bad grades. I do not get in trouble ever. I never thought I would ever, I would ever speak in a school committee meeting, but the school has left us students with no other choice, though the things that happened at Southbridge High School events will make any student want to drop out. Actually, this year, we had students drop out and not show up because of Mr. House, the administrator. I want to, I want to discuss a couple things. On the first day of school, 12 to 13 kids were suspended. Who wants to get excited to come to school and get, get an education when all this is happening and kids are being treated like we are less than the gum that is spat out on the side of the road? Just today, I was walking out of lunch, and the assistant principal, Ms. Coda, yelled my name in front of a huge group of students, embarrassing me. She said that the outfit that I had on today was against the dress code policy. As you can see, my shirt does not cover, does not cover my belly button, and I'm not showing a large portion of my stomach, which is what the new policy is. I have not gone home and changed my clothes. My issue really is in the dress code policy, or even the fact that I was embarrassed. It's the way that students are being addressed. I was pulled, I was pulled out of, I was pulled out of class by two assistant principals. I had a very, I had a very important assignment to complete, to complete that was due today. It was an essay for English, which I completely missed out on because they, they knew because I had told them about it. I had told them that I had an English assignment that I had to complete because it was due today. It was a part, it was a huge great thing. Another issue is compliance, compliance with the IP, with all the students' IPs. They, they are not meeting the IP expectation. I even told the teacher about having our poll, poll outs, and she said, "Try your best, Mr. House isn't doing poll outs." We do not have any poll outs to get the help or enough staff to help us or with our assignments. This is illegal, this is against the law, and this is the first time that this has happened. We need a change. Someone has to step in, and please do not let my voice go, go unheard.
Can I ask you one question? Now, on your IEP, you're, you're not getting the services that you're supposed to get under your IEP, is that correct?
Correct. It's not only me, but it's like every other student.
Okay, the others were all about discipline issues, but there was one issue that was your IEP not being followed?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Eva Tibbetts. I'm a student at Southbridge High School. I'm a junior. I'm an AP student as well. I agree with what is being said today by my peers, and the school needs help, and what the administration are doing to try and help at the moment is not working. The way the administration is currently, it is interfering with our education and causing unnecessary distress. We want to know what to do to make changes going forward.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Aracelis Escalante. I am a junior at Southbridge High School, and I'm an AP student and a very hard worker. I'm here today to agree with my fellow classmates and just say that my experience hasn't been good at Southbridge High School at all this year. The administration and disciplinary system at the school is unfair and very flawed. I have had my own personal experience with the administration, and based off what I've seen and heard, I can say with full certainty that there is no mutual respect at all and no boundaries. Jeff House has made my school experience extremely unenjoyable and hard to get by. He's always roaming the hallways, picking on students, and looking for something to put us in SSC for. I find myself and others constantly trying to avoid him in the halls in fear of being talked to and antagonized. Southbridge High School needs help because new rules, these new rules put in place are clearly not working nor helping. If anything, they are ruining me and my classmates' education and future. That's why we are standing here today. They have been trying to silence us for far too long. We need to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. I would like to say that my daughter had an incident last week with Mr. House at the school, at the Southbridge High School, and she was right away, she wanted, she asked for a counselor. She never got a counselor until everything was blown out of proportion. He was poking at my daughter with his words, and I teach my kids, "Respect, and then you receive respect at all times. You have to respect school staff at all times, everybody that's authorized to tell you guys in school where to go, what to do, everyone." And I expect the staff to do the same. And my daughter was having a rough time. She wanted to speak to a counselor, and he right away jumped on her and started telling her to go to her classroom, and it was blown out of proportion where the next day, I went to the school. I held her back, I brought her to school myself, and I demanded to speak to the sprint, to the principal, and to Mr. House. And when the principal, everyone greeted me nicely, the way people usually would do, you know, professionals at, at that. And Mr. House, they paged him, and when he came down, he wasn't pleasant at all. As a parent's point of view, he wasn't pleasant at all. He was what I would say sarcastically rude. He told Mr. Ortiz, the school principal, that he didn't, that he had things to do, and he had another parent who respectfully called in and spoke to him respectfully and made an appointment to meet with him, and that if I wanted to speak to him, I would have to do the same, but he was gonna, because I showed up, he was gonna sit there and listen for a few minutes. He only could spare a few minutes, he said. So I agreed. We sat down, and he was just explaining, I wanted to hear his side of the story, and I wasn't happy at all, ma'am. I was not happy. I wasn't happy the way he excused himself rudely again, sarcastically rude. Okay, he kind of sugar-coated it, and it's not, for a parent, you don't want that experience, especially when you're a parent that has always been open with the school, always showed up, always go to parent-teachers nights. I've done it all. I go to sports nights, you know, when my daughter has games. Why should I feel the same way that the students are feeling? There's no respect for Mr. House, and I didn't appreciate it, to come home and find my daughter crying, eyes swollen, and I know her. You know your kids. You know when they lying to you. I don't think this was the case, ma'am. She was punished for rolling her eyes at Mr. House, which she didn't even look at him and make eye contact when she did so, as she tells me, and I believe her. So I wanted to meet with Mr. House, but like I said, it wasn't a great experience, and I wanted to make sure that you guys hear me out on that, that I, it wasn't a pleasant experience with Mr. House, but it was with the other staff members. I didn't have an issue. Mr. Ortiz listened to me, he, he, he heard me out, and my daughter. Mr. House, he wasn't trying to hear me out, and I am not a happy parent because of that. And that was the first time that I experienced something like that, all the years that my kids have gone to the schools here in Southbridge, so I wanted you guys to know that. Thank you so much, and you guys have a good evening, a good night. Thank you.
Thank you very much for letting us know. You're welcome. Are there any other comments from this group?
No, thank you.
I'd like to especially thank the young women for standing up and speaking their You're going to be strong, you're going to be strong women, you're going to be good mothers and good employees and good people. Thank you very much for, for being good, for being good. Number six is chairman's announcements. Tonight, because Dr. Valar is with us, I'll have no chairman's announcements. The only thing is, I wish I remembered to, to really look at the name. A young citizen from the town of Southbridge painted our playground at Eastford Road, and I wanted to go out there and jump on the, the various squares, except, as I said, I sprained my ankle, and I won't be doing that for a while, but I'd like to thank that person, and I'm sorry I didn't get your name. Okay. Dr. Valar?
I'm going to go to the podium.
Yep.
Thank you.
Before I get into my formal presentation, I want to take a moment and introduce everybody to the new principal at Southbridge High School, Dr. Jose Ortiz. Dr. Ortiz has more than 20 years' experience as a school leader, and he's been with us here in Southbridge, I'd say for the past three and a half years or so, working with me and the central office staff, and last summer, he came to me and asked for the challenge to lead Southbridge High School. He has strong feelings about the direction of the school, so I'd like to take a moment and allow Dr. Ortiz to speak with you all, share a few things about himself, and when he's through, then I'm gonna actually do my formal presentation. So I'd like to present to you Dr. Jose Ortiz.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I just want to acknowledge my four awesome juniors who came here tonight. Thank you for coming and stating what you needed to say. Also, Mom, thank you for bringing the kids. I appreciate it. I just want you to know that I heard you, okay? I heard you. Again, my name is Jose Ortiz. I am the very proud principal of Southbridge High School. This is something that I started just this summer. I am originally from Puerto Rico, so that makes me the first Puerto Rican principal of Southbridge High School, which is something that I am very, very proud of, my culture and my heritage. I use my language, Espanol, every day in the hallways with the kids. They feel like they, I am someone that they can speak to, and again, I cannot be prouder to be the principal of Southbridge High School and serving the whole school community. I am looking forward to doing great things in Southbridge High School. We have lots of work to do. I, I, like, I am not gonna say that we are perfect, but one thing that I am gonna do is that I am committed to excellence and to ensure that our students graduate from high school and that they have a bright future. I am most proud of the kids. I cannot tell you. The staff over at Southbridge High School is extremely committed to ensure that every child succeeds and to reach their maximum potential, and I am just gonna keep on going. You can count on me that I have the commitment to the school and that we are gonna do great things. Let the time tell, and the actions tell, but for sure, I am gonna be looking forward to coming to the school committee meeting and just telling you all the wonderful things that are happening at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. I, I share his excitement in having a Puerto Rican principal at a school where 72% or so of the students are from Puerto Rico. I think it's very important to, to cherish students' background and be represented in administration. So this evening, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the opening of school and provide the school committee with a bit of an update and the members of the community that are here. You heard from Dr. Ortiz, the newly appointed principal at the high school. Mrs. Hool, who was the associate principal at the middle school, is now the middle school principal, so she too is a newer leader in our district, having developed and come from assistant principal up to principal at the middle school. Our district leadership team remains very stable. We continue to build out the finance office and human resources, and our curriculum management systems are stable and continue to improve over the past five years here in the district. We have worked very hard on robust integrations in all of our data systems, so our student information management system now talks to our HR and finance systems, and all of the technology that teachers use in classrooms are all linked, so that when we register students, their access and logins, all that is rather automated, and continue to improve the use of data, because that's very important for teachers to drive our instruction. Our curriculum remains robust and aligned with state standards, and we have annual training, obviously, for our teachers around supporting their knowledge about that curriculum and the best ways to teach it. I'm really pleased to announce that we were awarded just very recently nearly $800,000 to support our 21st Century After School programming, which is now at the three elementary schools in our middle school. That's a program we've had now for the past, I think, three budget cycles, and we're very pleased to offer that for our students. I would talk about financial reports, but it's not yet been finalized. It's my understanding we're likely to have an extension, and the town will complete the annual report that's required by DESI, but later on, we can talk about where all that is as we get that information. And DESI will also be releasing very soon, school statistics. MCAS will be coming out, high school graduation rates and all of that, so as the year progresses, we'll, we'll definitely delve into those things. Did want to talk a little bit about attendance. This graph will be, why didn't it show up? There we go. Sorry. So year-over-year attendance, what we're seeing is, coming out of the pandemic, our secondary schools were absolutely lagging in daily attendance last, the year before last. Last year, we did see a bit of an increase, so the high school now for last year had an 87.3% daily attendance rate, up from the year before, which was 83.2. The middle school has improved. It is, last year ended at 91.5%, up from 89. Our elementary, I'm sorry, I'm skipping ahead. Southbridge Academy ended the year 81.7% daily attendance, improving from 75.2%. Last year, the academy did have several students who were hospitalized for long periods of time for mental health situations, and that certainly dropped their number a bit lower than what the high school average is. Our elementary schools fluctuated up and down about a percentage point, but on average are about 92%, which is the historical average here in Southbridge, going back almost two decades. It's about 92% across all schools. We need to improve that. Really, we should be 95% to 98% daily attendance if we want to have high-performing attendance, so there's a long way to go there. We work with families, there's a lot of outreach, there's a lot of need, there's a lot of reasons why attendance sometimes is not where it needs to be. We're trying to create systems that do work with families to try to solve those problems. The high school graduation was very successful. I know some of the members of the council and the school committee were present during our graduation. It was inside. That's never a popular decision, but the weather was not working with us, and we needed to make a call so that everyone knew where we were gonna be. We did have 90 students graduate. It was approximately 99 students in that class, so overall, I would expect when the state graduation rates come out, they'll be up again. It is a calculation based on cohorts, so it's not just a quick math where it looks like it might be 90%. We'll wait and see when we match all the students. 52% of our graduates indicated they're going to a college, either two- or four-year school. 13% of our graduates talked about going to trade school, another 4% attending the military. We have some students in a work education program. We have some students in a work education program, and there were a group of students that, at that time, were unknown as far as what their future plan would be, undecided. This summer, we spent a lot of time preparing for the school year. So between ending the school year, running a summer school program, and then having all the training and planning, it becomes quite busy. So in early August, we had the administrators in for administrative retreat, and that was from August 7th through the 11th, where we provided them all kinds of training on either the latest curriculum, legal updates around laws, procedures, data management, et cetera. We also then had our new teacher orientation, which is something that Southbridge should be really proud of. Our new teachers get nine days of time to prepare before they get into a classroom, which is very unusual. In most districts, it's a day or two and school starts. So we get nearly that full extra week before teachers come back for their training. So we have a lot of professional development for our staff, which I think is important. August 18th through the 23rd is when all teachers in our district were back. We began to, again, work on understanding curricular changes, assessments, different programs and protocols. There's a whole range of training that's required of teachers every year, and we're able to provide that during that time. On August 21st, in collaboration with the Southbridge Police Department and Southbridge Fire Department, the Southbridge Public Schools Administrative Team, all school leaders and central office leaders, the key crisis responders in our schools, met with the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, MIMA, for training. It was a desktop role-play training, crisis management, where they developed for us a potential crisis, happened to be centered at the high school building, and then we were to talk through what action steps would be necessary, which response plans we would follow, and it helps the group identify any shortcomings that you may have in your existing systems, helps you think about things you may never even have thought of happening in a crisis situation. We're waiting for a formal report from MIMA. They took lots of notes through all the participants. One thing I did want to draw attention to that was loud and clear, the high school has one access point, there's one way in, and that's a problem if we have a major crisis. It was discussed at length that there really should be a secondary access to that school. I'm sure that'll be in the report. We'll wait and see more as that information's released. In the schools, we've already begun lockdown drills this year, the high school's already practiced. There will be formal drills that we will conduct with the police. We've notified families, we try to give people a heads-up before the drill will happen, but we intend on making sure folks are knowledgeable and ready in the event that we do have a crisis, and we certainly hope that never happens. Over the summer, hiring went very smoothly. We began hiring teachers for this current year last March, and so we did have some folks on board very early. We tried to do that purposefully. You want to get folks who are just about ready to graduate early and promise them that job and bring in some really strong young talent into the talent pool, but we also hired throughout the summer. So this year, we hired four different administrators, a behavior tech, a BCBA, deans of students. We hired 13 educational assistants, two psychologists, a nurse, and 40 teachers across the district. That number's actually down from years past. I remember a high of, the years all blend, but a high over 80 at one point. So we'll see what the retention data looks like. As, again, we report all of this information to the department, they process it using an algorithm, and then we'll compare apples to apples, years to years. But hiring went very smoothly. We do have a couple openings, so we're still looking for a grade four teacher at Charlton Street School. Right now, in that absence, we have some of the literacy coaches serving as the classroom teacher, so they are teachers from that school in years past. They were originally planning on helping assist classroom teachers with literacy, but at the moment, because we do not have a grade four teacher, they are filling in. We also have a grade one dual-language position. Unfortunately, that individual resigned after like the second day of school, so obviously not a good fit. We do have a substitute in there as we speak, but we are looking for individuals. You'll see that we post all year long for various positions, either anticipating we might lose a staff member or making sure that we are prepared for the next school year. Trying to staff is a high priority. Nothing more important than the people that we have working in our systems to support our student learning. The opening enrollment, this is at September 11th. We currently have 1,897 students listed on the rolls. Now, this can change. October 1 is when it will be the official number. It does appear like enrollment is up. Again, there's working out in the beginning of school, sometimes families, students are still on the rolls, but they've moved, and so you have to work through a process before you can drop them from the rolls, to make sure your rolls are accurate. So all districts do this. The state will use October 1 as the official cut date, and that is important, because that number is used for the next year's Chapter 70 funding. So making sure enrollment is accurate is always super important. You can see that we have a spike in enrollment. It drops during the summer, there's a graph on the right. Kind of goes flatline for a little while, and then it ramps up real quick. Well, that's because it's August and September, and everybody's coming back and thinking about getting their kids registered for school. So that's actually a pretty typical spike that we see. As we move into some of our instructional priorities, one driver of all instructional priorities across the Commonwealth is the Student Opportunity Act. It's an act that Southbridge actually benefits quite a bit financially from, because it changes the formula, the Chapter 70 formula, and it's aimed at increasing monies towards high-need students, which we have about 80% of our students meet that qualification. It does specify that we need to be sure to use very specific instructional approaches, different targeted interventions, approaches for talent development, and setting the certain environmental conditions. All of this is aligned with what we had in our turnaround plan. Obviously not accidental that the state would utilize a similar approach in talking about Student Opportunity Act across the Commonwealth. The Southbridge Twelve of Schools do employ an instructional framework that's based on the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, and these frameworks, and in addition to the curricular frameworks for every content area, they, we also depend on the Massachusetts framework for effective teaching strategies and teaching practice. So they're both very lengthy articulated frameworks that spell out the requirements both on what it means to be an effective teacher and what kids are supposed to know and be able to do at every grade level in all content areas. These important frameworks really direct our work for professional development, curricular development, the application of curriculum, and in effective teaching and learning in all of our classrooms. So our framework requires careful planning based on those standards that are articulated, what students know and should be able to do at every grade level, and then the instruction has to be not only aligned with the state's standards, but use effective teaching strategies, infusing things like positive behaviors, interventions, and supports, which is providing students with things like behavior-specific praise, clear opportunities to respond to teachers' questions, positive praise and a praise-to-correction ratio in classroom are just some of the things we might look for in that framework. After instruction occurs, teachers are required to reflect on their practice, reflect on student learning data, and adjust their plans. It is hard and complicated work to be a classroom teacher, and I think sometimes folks really fail to understand just how much preparation and knowledge and effort a teacher has to put in in their classroom. And candidly, in Massachusetts, the standards are very high and very rigorous, so our teachers work really hard, and when you see one, you should thank them, because they are doing yeoman's work, there's no doubt about it. Here, over the past five and a half years, we've had some key strategies that we are working on, leveraging the positive environment in schools. We've partnered with UConn and have been a national demonstration site for the positive behaviors, interventions, and supports. We're hoping that UConn receives another grant for five years. Just today, we were in conversation, if that happens, we're likely to be selected and partner with them again. We have a lot of work to do, but we've made a lot of progress, and the university has seen that and written about that, and so we're hopeful for that. We also continue to work on our curricular standards in language arts and math, and what this graph tries to show is this is a progression of building of capacity over time. It's not been something that's happened in just one year. And we do have teacher turnover, and so when you have teacher turnover, there's a lot of professional development that you have to continuously engage in to get folks up to speed, and obviously, that's a lot of work. And so we rely on our external partners to provide support. We lean hard on our principals to lead professional development, but it, again, it's complex work that they're all engaged in. While we have been working to develop capacity, improve teaching and learning, we have faced some strong headwinds. The pandemic, which is a once-in-a-hundred-year experience for all of us, has absolutely destabilized the workforce. I do see signs this year of it stabilizing. I think it was a little easier to find some folks this summer than last, but education has experienced a large drop-off in people going into schools of education and interested in doing the work. So that will remain a challenge, not just for us, but for educators across the country. And we're seeing a lot of states engaging in some interesting and different ways of attracting people to the education profession with alternative routes to licensure. At the same time, during this period of time, Southbridge has dramatically increased the number or percentage of students who are high needs in our schools. So we're among three towns across the state of Massachusetts who have at least 80% of their students high needs, so we have a very dense level of need in our schools. As we continue to push for improvement, we've implemented structures that do support teaching and learning. So we have extended the school day at the elementary school. We do have the early release time on Wednesdays to allow for some of that professional development. Our school schedules are designed to support common planning time for teachers who teach the same content or the same grade level, so they can work together. We have our positive behaviors, interventions, and supports frameworks, and we're working on our implementation of what we call multi-tiered systems of support, which actually is an overlay of PBIS in the instructional realm, providing students with support beyond the classroom when they need extra help. Again, professional development is a theme here. It is a high priority. That's why we work with these different partners, UConn, Hill for Literacy, Looney Mathematics, Curriculum Associates, and other groups. They bring expertise in for us, they help support a large percentage of new educators and build their capacity. One of the things I think is super important is always having the curricular and instructional support materials that are necessary, so when you adopt a new curriculum, every year you have to make sure you have those materials ordered and ready for our teachers to have. As a former teacher, there's nothing more frustrating than being asked to teach something without the materials you need to teach it. So we work very hard to be sure that we have books, workbooks, materials, manipulatives for teaching math, all those resources in our classrooms for our teachers. Supporting the implementation of all these different curricula requires materials, and it's something that we built into our operating budget so that we can refresh those pieces that need to be replaced on an annual basis. The Southbridge Twelve of Schools continue to our investment in providing students with academic and social-emotional interventions. So as you can see in that tiered triangle, the district seeks to provide students with the targeted instructional support that they need to be successful. So the large green base, it's like 80% of your students can do well in a normal classroom with typical instruction, but there's going to be a group of students who will need something in addition to, and I'm not speaking of special education students, that's a different group, but just kids who might need a little extra help in a certain content area, and there's a different approach that we can try, and so that's our, what we would refer to as Tier Two. There's also a group of kids who still aren't going to do well with that level of support, and they're going to need something else. We call that Tier Three, and that's a very intensive, focused layer of support. If these things don't work, they do become part of a potential identification process for special education services, because we would say the instruction, we've tried all these things, there might be time to look at assessment for qualifications for special education. So that's built into the instructional model. Right now, as a district, we have 17 FTEs that we have built in to provide these non-special education additional supports to kids who might need just a little extra in the classrooms. You can see the investment is heavy in the elementary schools, because that's where gaps are the smallest, and if we can get that right, kids have a much better chance of doing well as they get older through school. The demands of the pandemic and the Student Opportunity Act call for additional resources to support students' social-emotional learning and mental health. There are 18 FTEs across the district targeted towards that work. We also have implemented curriculum such as Second Step, which is a program to help teach students about social-emotional learning in our elementary schools. We have a partnership with a firm called Cartwheel that provides remote counseling and psychiatric and even medical services for students, and we worked with a group called the School Empowerment Network that helps train staff on restorative practices. We have actually quite a few steps in our secondary schools in particular where we try to avoid suspension. There are a lot of different ways where you can help remediate that. We did hear from some students who are unhappy with the SSC, and there are parts of that system that clearly can be better, but there are also parts of that system that are highly effective, and we have seen suspensions rates drop in the district over time, and I think that's a good thing. Essentially, the legislation across the state of Massachusetts has placed suspension as your real last option. You want to try to do as many different things as possible, and although that can be hard with older children, it's important to go through all those steps. Support for a positive and orderly learning environment is important. I do remember when I arrived in Southbridge, everybody was talking about the middle school in particular. There was a lot of concerns, and over time, that school has improved dramatically. There were growing pains. I think our high school is now currently experiencing a very similar experience that happened in our middle school a few years back. Creating an environment that is supportive is super important, having those climate and culture individuals, a large number of social workers and adjustment counselors will make a difference. We are three weeks in, but I am feeling very confident that this school year is going to end very differently than what last year was, and it's super important. Over the summer, the leadership at the high school worked to create a structure that should ensure a much more successful school year. You heard from Dr. Ortiz. In my career, he's probably one of the strongest interpersonal skilled individuals that I've ever worked with, and I haven't found too many people who dislike Dr. Ortiz. He's very, very easy to talk to and very good with people, but he does have a large task ahead of him in turning around a school that has been in disarray for quite some time. And so that, he and his team did sit down over the summer, and they set some priorities, improving staff, making sure staff are strong and knowledgeable about their skill sets, that means a lot of training, hiring people who are committed to the work here in Southbridge, committed to our students, which is super important, making sure the staff culture is one that believes in our students and doesn't blame our students, but wants to work with our students. And so that's an important part of the hiring process, and that will take time to build that culture. Top-quality schedule and programming for students in the program of studies. We have our partnership with QCC. They're providing classes in the school, but we're also working with them to apply for early college experience permission from the state of Massachusetts. And so if awarded this opportunity, we would be able to have students also participate in courses, simultaneously enrolled in Southbridge High School, and go to QCC's campus and take courses there. So an exciting advanced opportunity that we're currently working on getting permission for as we speak. Our students do take QCC courses at Southbridge High School, do receive college credit for them if they pass and do well. We're looking to expand that program. So we got Part A approved. It's a two-part process, so Part B goes in later this year, and we hope for the best on that. Making sure that we have a safe and positive school, climate and culture, is a very important piece. piece. And certainly, again, a lot of work to do there. But as you heard from Dr. Ortiz, I think he and his team are committed to reaching those goals. And then some measurable academic progress. Not just graduation rates, that's important, but we want to look at improving student performance on all standardized measures, SAT, college admissions, AP testing, et cetera. Our students who work hard should be challenged so that their hard work pays off in good results on those very important tests that can sometimes really predict where you're going to go to school. And that can set up your future for sure. The middle high schools adopted what's called a universal design approach to supporting students. The basic premise is to create systems and structures across the school that are clear, reliable, and supportive to all students, so that how each classroom is managed by those teachers in those classrooms is very much the same, so that students can then see that if this happens in this classroom, it'll be consistent across the school. Anyone who's worked with groups of people know that takes a little while to get everyone on the same page. But it is research-based and highly effective in providing students, particularly we heard earlier about students with trauma, it's a super important piece of that, which is having a reliable, predictable environment. And if you don't know what's going to happen at any given moment, that certainly can make you more anxious. So having universal design is a part of that process at the school. So the teachers are trained in classroom management approach with specific steps. For example, how to call students to attention, how to provide clear directions, active monitoring of student work, providing behavior-specific praise, being predictable, redirection, showing students who are off task how to get back on task, being clear about consequences, and very importantly, providing positive reinforcement. We know these strategies work. They've worked wonders in our middle school, to be quite honest, where that climate is 180 degrees different than where it was a few years back. A key piece of this is, and I've seen this firsthand, last Wednesday, I spent the afternoon with the staff in their professional development. Staff were practicing with each other. So they have staff who act as the teachers, staff who act as the students, and they practice how to do all these different pieces. It's a little wonky at first for staff. It's hard to do that in front of others. I was really proud of what I saw. These teachers are working really hard to get really good at their craft. So our challenges. Southbridge ranks among the top districts in the state for the percentage of high-need students. And so as student needs increased, unfortunately, our local funding contributions have decreased over time. So we've now dropped to the bare minimum level of what's considered adequate funding by the state of Massachusetts. That represents a challenge for all of us, obviously. Good news is the Student Opportunity Act has increased state aid to the town of Southbridge here in Massachusetts. And that's been a lifeline for the school district. We have not eliminated positions. I predict you'll see other districts as we go into next year, for sure, with elimination of federal funding from COVID, that there'll start to be quite a bit of reductions of staff in some of the more middle-to-affluent school districts. We've also had some difficulties with finances over the summer. I am meeting this Thursday with the new town manager, Mr. Jovan. I've always worked well with Jack, so I'm looking forward to that conversation. But we had delayed purchasing, so we weren't able to order everything that we needed right out of the gate in July. That's important. Last year, we had three payroll disruptions, right? That meant staff came, checked their bank account in the morning, and they didn't get paid. That's hard for me to retain staff, right? Like that, they think it's my fault. I get it. Like, you're the guy at the top, so it must be your fault. It was a bank processing error the first time, right? So there were these errors. We have to work together to stop that. We can't have those, because nothing hits morale worse than that, for sure. We just got access to our capital funds that were part of the budget on Monday. We needed to buy a new truck to plow roads, so we've got to put that order in, but you can't do it without funds. We have to update all the telephones in the school district, because they're not 911 compliant with the new legislation. That project's delayed several months now. And so to be able to do that, it's going to take us a while. So getting a system, and again, I look forward to working with Mr. Jovan, we need a system where these funds are allowed or opened up and given access to the school district as soon as they're approved, so that we can move forward quickly. Building maintenance also is delayed when funds aren't open. I am happy to say, working with the previous town manager, we did agree to take on the management of health insurance enrollment of our staff members. I acknowledge we have a lot of people coming and going, and it took, it was hard for the town to keep track of that. So our HR department has taken on that additional responsibility, taking a little bit off the plate. So again, we hope to work together to solve some of these problems. It's important that we can accomplish our goals together. I mentioned earlier, last year's budget was just about at the minimum. It was 100.4%. I'm sorry, that's fiscal year '23. This current budget is projected to be at 100%, right at state minimum spending. We'll see when the end-of-year reports are done. There's a lot of calculations and all that. There is a possibility we'll be under. If we're under state's requirements, then the town will be notified, and we'll have to work together to rectify that solution. Over the past six budget cycles, Southbridge has grown increasingly dependent on state funding. I think that's important for us all to know. It's basically gone to 76% of all funds in our Southbridge Public Schools are coming from state aid, about 24% from the town. That's about roughly $9 million. And so in one way, it's a heck of a good deal. If you live in town, you're paying for about $9 million out of that budget. But when an act like the Student Opportunity Act was introduced, it does demand more local contribution. And so since we dropped, when I started, we were a good million dollars above the minimum spending levels. But over time, because the local contribution didn't grow, that budget, that cushion is gone. And so as we look into next year's budget, it is quite possible that there'll be at least another half a million, if not more, required in local contribution, along with projected increase in state aid. This current budget cycle, fiscal year '24, the town paid about $840,000 of more local funds and received $2.6 million or so in additional state funds. And that, again, is directly related to the Student Opportunity Act. So as we look forward to next year, you know, I will clearly work with the EHS Subcommittee. Mr. Racine and I will try to get ahead of what the projections are and include that in any budget documentation that we build, so that we're all aware of where we're headed. And so, lastly, it seems like last year, so the budget cycle prior, the town council supplied funding so that we could create an RFP to find a firm to produce what's called a master plan for the school facilities. So last year, we did that. We put out an RFP. We selected a firm, Context Architecture out of Boston. That firm has been working to examine our facilities. So they looked at the 2019 report that was commissioned by a previous town manager, Mr. San Angelo, and the town council at that time. They're pulling that data, but they've toured all of our buildings extensively, taken photos, reviewed documentation. They're conducting a thorough analysis of both buildings and instructional programming, and will help produce for us an understanding of the cost of renovating schools, what the options are around renovating schools, configurations of schools in alignment with our instructional programming. I expect that they'll have some draft reports in the next few months, but this is a pretty extensive process. It takes a long time. Even with a master plan document, it will require work with the town council to determine what steps, next steps, the town would want to take. You know, first, we're going to get our arms around what the problem looks like, how much it might cost, what potential solutions are. But nothing can be done without the town council's approval and commitment to moving forward. In the fastest of timelines, this is years, three, four, five years of work, easily. But it's important that we've got it started, because our schools, our elementary schools, are in very tough condition. They're very old since the last time they've been renovated. So a lot of work to do with that. So we'll keep you updated as we get more information. But for now, that's a quick review of where we are, the work we've been working on. You know, there's a lot of work that's been accomplished. I'm very thankful for the hard work of our staff. But there's a lot of work to do. And as I told Dr. Ortiz, you climb a mountain by looking at your feet and taking one step at a time. And I encourage him to keep doing that. But we are, I'm proud of the fact that we've made a lot of progress in the last five years. So with that, I will end my presentation and thank everyone for your attention.
Thank you, Dr. Valar, for sharing all that information with us.
Can we ask questions?
Seems to me you should be able to.
Madam Chair, if I may, through you. Dr. Valar, looking at the attendance report sheet that we have in the packet here. We saw a, it looks like we had a decrease in our seniors or 12th graders in attendance from 81.6 from 21 to 22 to down to 77.7. It appears to be a 4.1% drop. And I understand that you've been reaching out to families to try to help with attendance. Do we have any, have you been working with your staff and other administration to try to develop sort of programs or more outreach to try to ensure that we get our higher ed students in the classroom? I know some of this attendance may very well be from work, students working to help provide their families. But are there, is there any research going into trying to see what we can do for our older students? Or is there any plan to develop any more further outreach to get them in the classroom?
Every school has an attendance team. Dr. Ortiz, prior to taking the role as the high school principal, actually helped coordinate that work across our district. And so those attendance teams have various members of the school, including family liaisons, guidance or adjustment counselors, school administration, teachers. There's been a lot of documented outreach, phone calls, there's logs stored in our Aspen system of different conversations and outreach. When necessary, we do file with court systems on students who, you know, just aren't responding. That's like our last approach. Since the pandemic, with secondary school students, it's been very hard to pull some of them back into school. A lot of it, not all, but a lot of it is about mental health-related. And so connecting, that's one of the impetus for our connection with Cartwheel, which allowed for some remote counseling for some kids that weren't coming in. But it's a very complex problem. We have lots of data on effort. But we, like most other secondary schools, haven't solved the problem. What I tell folks is you don't stop trying. You just keep reaching out, home visits, you know, community agencies, there's pumping up athletics participation. There's all kinds of things that work for different kids. It's a very one-by-one solution. You know, what makes one kid choose not to come to school is different than another. It's complex.
Madam Chair, I had a listening session yesterday. One of the things that was brought up was actually the reason some students do not get to go if they miss the bus, for example, is because of lack of transportation. I'm wondering if there's anything that could be done about that. I don't know if there's other resources out there, or if we could work with the WRTA somehow, like, I'm not too certain, but I guess a lot, what I heard was the lack of transportation when they do miss the school bus, because parents do not have vehicles to bring them to schools.
I do think that's right. I've heard that, too. And there have been efforts to try to get public transportation to the high school's location. You know, we have, and I see students, the data is clear, like, they're late at the same time every day, and they literally walk a very long way. And, you know, one of the conversations Dr. Ortiz led with staff is, that's actually a high five, right? An attaboy, that kid walked all that way. Yes, they missed the bus, all these things, but that's some serious dedication to get to school. We have been trying to explore, like, is there a way to create our own shuttle system? It's financially very difficult. There's some hurdles to that. Trying to figure out even how to manage, like, well, how would you select who gets the ride? But the location of the school does make it hard for kids if they miss the bus. There's no doubt about that. We've just seen so many kids walking. So we do wish public transportation would create a bus stop for us, because that would be huge. But it has not worked. But again, we haven't given up.
Thank you. I also wanted, okay, I just want to give Yalita Augusto, you know, extend congratulations to her on doing the high school senior send-off. I did attend, and it was a great event. And I saw all the seniors that were there. They were all happy and being together, and it was a great event. Councilor Rivas was there, David Adams was there. And it was a great event, and I just want to applaud her efforts for sending off her students. And I just also want to say thank you to Chair Lasso for being here, Chair, Vice Chair Marquetti, Councilors Chenier, Dow, Montegni, Rivas, Daniels, Aspida as well. You know, to me, it matters that not only they're there, they're here, but also that the community's here, because it makes a difference when we all come together as a unit, because that's the only way we can move our town forward. So I want to thank you guys for being here. I also wanted to say, I'm very proud of you ladies for showing up, for being here. You are our future, and you guys are true leaders. You know, I want you to continue doing what you're doing. And when you graduate, I want you to think about running for town council. I want you to think about running for school committee, because that is how you get things done and make policies and change. So I want you to start thinking about things like that. And I don't know any of you, but I would love to learn more about you. I want to be here for you, so just know that you have someone here that you could count on and that you could call me anytime. My number's everywhere now, my address, too. So just know that you can count on me, and I'm here for you guys, okay? And estoy bien orgullosa de todas ustedes. So, keep it up.
Thank you.
Questions, Madam Chair? And I guess one of them, actually, before I start, just echoing what Carla said, and that I really do appreciate the students who came, and I'm really hoping that more and more students will feel comfortable with the fact of being able to come, not only to school committee meetings, but to be able to email us or whatever, if you guys have things. Because we don't know. We're not the ones who are there in the classrooms, in the chairs. And hopefully, eventually, we'll get to the place where we're actually making more decisions regarding the school. And for us to make them without really knowing what's going on from your perspective is not going to be as helpful, but we'll only know if you share that with us. So I appreciate that. I did want to just ask really quick. There was one slide that I felt like I didn't understand as well as I would like to. And it was the one regarding all the different interventions. Here we go. Oh, no page numbers. Regarding UConn and the Hill for Literacy and Looney Math, we have what looks sort of like a timeline, but I wasn't sure if this was things that had been accomplished and the timeframe that they'd been accomplished, or...
Sure. I appreciate the opportunity to clarify. So, yes, from 2018 through 2023, these dots show a progression in each of those areas. So these are different steps that we have taken, different pieces that we've added. For example, in the first one, back in 2018, we were selected as a demonstration site for positive behaviors interventions and supports, got a lot of technical support from the university, and then began to build out different systems. So you can see, we created a position for the SEL, Social Emotional Learning Coordinator. And this is trying to depict that over time, things were added. It didn't all happen in one year. And, you know, it was a progression.
Okay. Thank you. That helps a lot. Okay.
Yes, I was wondering whether the, there was a reason for the blue and the green, but it's just a progression.
Yeah, I must admit, the blue and the green is Microsoft. Yeah, I must admit, the blue and the green is Microsoft. It felt...
Ah, yes, when in doubt.
Okay, and then I just was wondering, I know there was a page where you were talking about the discipline system and the different, different parts of the discipline system and going through with teachers and different staff, what the correct process would be for addressing students and things like that. And I know some of the students who are here, several of them I noticed, mentioned that they were called out in front of a group. And I just wanted to clarify whether that's part of our expected process for teachers. Are they normally encouraged to maybe call a student's name and bring them aside to talk to them or what would be the typical process for that?
Obviously, there's a million scenarios that can happen in the school. But mutual respect is something, and I took a lot of notes while our students were talking because I thought they were very articulate and it's very helpful. So yeah, you always want mutual respect, right? At the end of the day. And so how you accomplish that? And it's also part of the reason why we use something called PBIS because just assuming what I believe is respectful is what you believe is respectful is where we already start to fall apart. And I certainly heard some of that this evening, right? So what a student expects and what the adult expected in that scenario are very different. And so that's part of the communication system right there. I will say that they have been having, you know, grade level assemblies and speaking to the students and attempting to instruct, now, these are our expectations, this is what it looks like as an educational approach, and that's all happened and will continue to happen throughout the year. And, you know, history is the best predictor of the past. We did get through all of this in our middle school and worked through it. And we do need to work through it through the high school. And the school committee, I think, knows, but I'm happy to bring any school committee member over to the school at any point and we can walk the halls together and see what's good and see what we need to fix. And there's plenty of both, you know.
Thank you. And then the, the last question I have here is just clarification on the attendance data page. And I think I've probably asked this question in the past with these same reports, but so when it says attendance rate by school, that's the percentage of kids who are...
Present.
Present on any given day?
They average for the year.
They're average for the year. Okay, so they averaged, for instance, West Street averaged ninety-three percent attendance for the year. Okay. Does that take into account kids who are ill and things like that? Or is that just ninety-three percent of the students are in the building?
It, it takes, in the sense, if you're not present, you have to be marked absent. So although there's excused absences that, you know, would be recorded and all those reasons are recorded in our information management system. And so if a child is, you know, has a really significant illness and they miss thirty days and they're chronically absent, that's not going to lead to a filing with the court system for, you know, truancy because there's a whole explanation.
But they would still show up on here?
They would.
In the chronically absent category?
Correct. And we had that, I mentioned, at Southbridge Academy. We had some students that were hospitalized for a lot of periods of time, they missed a lot of school. We had to mark them absent, they weren't there. They were getting alternative instruction whenever feasible and possible in that location.
So in other words, it's possible that this other six point eight percent of kids were sick that day so that you actually had, I mean, not that day, obviously it's for the year, but that seems like a pretty good attendance rate, I guess, is what I'm thinking if that doesn't account for kids who are ill and things like that.
Honestly, I would say a good attendance rate would be like ninety-five percent, maybe ninety-eight percent. So this is low.
Okay.
It needs to be higher.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have another question. Go ahead.
Can I say something? This is a good thing and I think we need to hear good things about the schools. I went to the open house at the middle school tonight. My grandson, Jackson, is out there in the audience, he's in the eighth grade, and we met his teachers and I was so impressed and had such a good feeling. They seemed so enthusiastic and they talked about the things that they were going to be teaching. I'd like to take the classes. I don't know, I just, I just can't say enough about that. And then about Mr. House, I think he always personally, what I saw, did a good job at the middle school and that's why there weren't a lot of problems that I am aware of. We would ask Jackson if he saw a lot of stuff going on and he didn't really, I mean, there may have been some problems here and there. So hopefully at the high school, there can be a middle ground where, where it is fair and where, you know, like even some of the teachers were saying, some of the kids are happy about being more strict and some are not, but we want it to be fair. But, but I think he did personally, again, a good job at the middle school and so that's all.
Madam Chair?
No comment.
Were the assemblies done before or after the incident took place?
I don't know the exact dates. I know that the assemblies were...
First week?
First week, Friday of the first week.
Okay.
Please keep it to just the...
All right, thank you.
...this report.
Yep. Mike Marquetti, 120 Maria Avenue, also a Southbridge Town Councilor. Dr. Valar, first of all, speaking for myself, I just want to, I appreciate this report that you've given. It was very down-to-earth, very easy to understand and very transparent. So I want to, I really appreciate what you did tonight with this report. So that's one thing. The second thing is, as far as the transportation goes, we do have a member of the town council on the WRTA and they have managed to keep the fees at no cost. So maybe we could ask them to also try and get a bus stop for the high school.
I'd appreciate that, Hal. Thank you.
And as far as the capital budgets go, we, we did approve all the, all the things that you asked for. We approved all of them at our capital planning. I don't know what happened there. Possibly we had a lot of turnover, town manager left, the finance director left. So that might have been what the holdup was, but we did approve it all. I saw, I hope that you have received the funds at this point.
I, I was told they were released on Monday and so, and of course, appreciate the financial support the town gave us in those, you know, those funds. Now we just got to hustle to spend it, you know, to get those things in place.
You talked about an access road. That's something that we should take a look at. Now, we're going to help, have to have some help with funding with that. So if we could find funding for an access road to the high school, I don't know where that would come in. DPW Director, I'm sure, could weigh in on that. Finally, and I just want to say, and this is no reflection on you, but the state did come in here, they put us under receivership. And so I think the state should fund our school system. And that's my opinion only. So thank you.
Thank you.
Please keep your comments only to this report.
Thank you. Jasmine Rivas, forty Roger Street. I am also a member of the town council. And just to talk a little bit about the WRTA, I know that I had spoken to the interim administrator who said that they were very open to providing an additional bus stop. I know that our town manager is going to meet with them this week, or the new administrator, I forgot his name now. But, um, so they are going to meet, so that could be a topic of conversation and see if that can be arranged, that there could be a bus stop for the middle high school. I know that we've had conversations before about that. I also, I do appreciate all of the information in the report. I do, I am curious about some outcome measures for the school empowerment network, some data on effectiveness, if you could share some of that, as well as the out-of-school-time Twenty-First Century program, again, very near and dear to me because I was here when it started in our district. But kind of, I'd love to see some data from the sales that are done with teachers and students that are reported to DUCY and just seeing where the outcomes, whether the out-of-school-time programs are helping with the daytime behaviors and academics of students. I know that those two things are tied together. So I'd love to see some data just on the outcome measures when it comes to some of the programs that have been implemented, you know, for over three years since before the pandemic. So I'd love to see a little more data on outcomes. I'd also like to see, or I'd like more information on just thinking about what the students were reporting today. And I, I agree with the sentiment with Carla and Erin that you are our future leaders and like Carla said, I am also available to support. I want students to reach out to us. We are here for you. Student voice is extremely important. It is one of the reasons why we've asked for student representation on the school committee. And there was student representation on the advisory council. I'd love to see all of that return. But just thinking about some of the disparate comments from the students about how they were treated as opposed to some of the data that, that we're seeing in the report with programming. I'm very familiar with PBIS. I'm also familiar with restorative practices. And in our community, and Dr. Ortiz knows this very well, as Puerto Rican, respect is extremely important in our culture and many Latino cultures. And so we need our staff to be trained in cultural competency. And I'd like to see some data on how our leadership is trained in cultural competency, what are some of the measures, some, some of the ways that this is measured for progress with our school leaders in particular. Messaging and structure, students want structure. But how we ask a student to comply with an expectation makes all of the difference. And the relationships that we build with students matter. And so if we don't have relationships with students and we're demanding or, you know, approaching it in a military-style way, that doesn't align with restorative practices. It doesn't align with PBIS. And so I'd like to see some data or some measurements on the progress of teachers and leaders in the system when it comes to cultural competency. So those are just some of the pieces.
And perhaps this year you can come with me to the middle school. I think you'd enjoy what you see.
Yeah. I've, I've been there before and I've, I've heard mixed...
I think you'd be quite impressed with our classroom, so I look forward to giving you a tour.
Yeah, I'd love to. Thank you.
Hi, Michael Montigny, fifty-eight Hilltop Drive in Southbridge. I am also a town counselor. Thank you so much for all the people for showing up and sticking to the presentation. Madam Chair, the beginning was introducing Dr. Ortiz back into the school system. We are lucky to have him and the state is lucky that he came back to, to help this town. And I really just wanted to focus on one part of this presentation where the increase year-over-year for the last few years has grown quite a bit, three million dollars almost for the state aid for the budget, but the town side has grown almost a million dollars over the last two years. And while taxpayer money goes to the state and to the federal and also local taxpayer money, the taxpayers of Southbridge have never contributed this much money to the school district, district in the history of this town. So I think that the taxpayers deserve a thank you very much for paying the nine point one million dollars that they did pay towards this budget. Thanks again. You're real lucky to have Dr. Ortiz. Why don't you have him stick to, instead of your super principal house?
Madam Chair, if I may, if I may.
Uh, Counselor, I have a school committee member.
I understand that the local contribution, the requirement has gone up for the taxpayer in Southbridge and it's tough. I understand that. My landlord's having a hard time paying his property taxes to keep up with his, his water bill and super bill, so I get it. And I understand it's tough, but I'm going to be honest, if, if you got to score twenty-eight points to try to win the game and then the team kicks a field goal at the end and now it turns to thirty-one, you don't get thanked for the twenty-eight. You regret the last three that you didn't get. So I, I, I hope that the town counselors over this year can, can do a little bit of an analysis and try to make sure that we're keeping up with, trying to keep above board on the minimum net school spending so we can budget further fiscally in the future. And I'm hoping our new town manager, I've worked with him in the past and he's, I think he's going to be a great leader in our town and help get us in the right direction, especially working with the school system, help him get everything back on board as far as financials go. But I, I am not going to say that the amount is going, is going to go up. So to, we're going to be paying ten million dollars next year and probably eleven million the year after because I believe that's the end of the seven-year increase. So I, I would hope that our town council does a little bit better planning as far as the minimum net spending that we have to contribute because I don't want to see our taxpayers getting pushed around year after year to try to keep up with the increasing budget of running this town. And that's going to include continuous increases to what we are required to spend by the state so that we don't get shut down to meet that minimum net school spending. Thank you.
Counselor?
Scarletville, thirty-six Ellis Road, Southbridge, Mass. Chairman of the council, proud to be a member of this town my whole life. I'd like to apologize for my attire. I got out of work at six-thirty and I was told to not miss the meeting. And I said, I will be there and I am here. But as, I didn't plan on coming up and talking, but I couldn't help, I can't help but not get involved. I understand schools, and I spent some years, we had a level-one high school, I was chairman of the building committee when we built the new middle high school. This discussion over the second access road, the second access road actually comes off of the baseball field. If you go into Southbridge High School, Middle School, and you drive into Main Thoroughfare, you come into the main parking lot. From the backside of the property where the baseball fields are, there's a road and a gate. And when we built the building, the police department has the keys to that gate that if something goes on, that they can come in from the backside of the property, down the hill, by the tennis courts, cross the bridge, and you're on the cafeteria side of the building, not on the front side of the building. That was the second access road for the middle high school when we built it. I'm just going to leave that there. If it doesn't qualify now, times change, regulations change. I can't help but comment on Jeff House. I'm not going to be a crowd pleaser here, I guess, because I am president of his fan club. Yes, he is animated. I coached Pop Warner for seventeen years and I was animated. But there is no culture that is allergic to discipline. We need to work with our students. I agree with that. And I, I agree that when I went to school, it's a different culture, different, whole different community. But if you look at what happened on the middle school side, I've sat back, I'm not a fan of, of receiverships, everybody knows that. But to be fair and to look at what happened on the middle school side, I've been sitting back and I'm watching this guy named Jeff House. He comes into our district, nobody knows who he is. He comes in and he...
Counselor, I don't think we should be talking about individual employees in the public setting if you have referred to a principal or if you would like to talk to...
I will retract that statement. I just thought that the students put a full-fledged attack on the person. I could do the same.
It's a public issue.
All right, I'll retract that. The gentleman that is overseeing the whole facility at this point... at this point, came into town and took over the middle school, which is, if anybody knows anything about education, the toughest age group to deal with when it comes to discipline, education, dress codes, everything. The gentleman comes in and he holds a high retention of teachers during his tenure. He changed it from the day he landed to the day he moved up to oversee the whole facility. I understand what Valar is doing, Mr. Valar is trying to do. He's trying to put more bread, more butter on the bread and make, take the whole loaf and straighten out the problems on the high school side. The high school has been a disaster in so many ways. And yes, I'm the guy that believes that we can fix anything. We can build anything. I'm a contractor. We can build morale. We can build schools. We can build a culture. But the bottom line comes down to is, when you have a person that's performed the way this person performed at the middle school side, wouldn't you think it's a good idea to maybe take his philosophy to the next level and take over the middle high school? When I say the middle high school, it's both sides. And I think that's what the attempt is. Now, there's going to be some broken eggs on the way. And I'll tell you what, when he moved over to that side
Point of order, Madam Chair. This, though I appreciate, Counselor, the speakers' comments, they are not pertaining to the presentation itself.
I agree.
So if there's question or anything to be had, I think we need to give other people an opportunity to speak as well.
And I do think perhaps you would be, you would be best addressing these to Dr. Valar privately. I'm sure that he'll be more than willing to, to consult with you. And yes, we're
I have no problem doing that. But don't ever let the students come up here and character assassinate an administrator without somebody backing up the administration. That's the problem.
Madam Chair, through you, Citizens Forum is an open forum where the public can speak their piece, as long as it's not related to an agenda item. That is an open forum that cannot be regulated and cannot, does not require any sort of debate or counter from the dais. That is the way it's written into law. So that's, that's what grants the citizens the opportunity to speak freely regardless of the opinions of anybody in the audience or anybody on the dais. Thank you.
Free speech. Yes?
My name is George Chenya. I live in Teresa Ave here in Southbridge, and I'm a member of the town council. And thank God I don't have kids in school. We talked about the DESA site. The DESA site is a very difficult site to follow and understand for the average person out there. And when Dr. Valar talked about the $9 million contribution that the taxpayers of Southbridge pay, it's really half the budget. $34, I believe, a million dollars were given to the school department. It's taxpayers' money. Now, for the taxpayers of Southbridge and for the members of council, it's not only the school committee, it's not only the schools that we need to worry about. With that kind of money, we're dealing with Bay Path, we're dealing with the charter schools and the school choices that leave the community. We're talking about public safety. We have to fund it all. And so it's a difficult challenge to try to be fair to everybody involved and to make Southbridge an accommodating place to come and to get their kids educated. Now, looking at the DESA site, what's disturbing to me is the amount of money that we have given over the course of the years since the state takeover ship is, was taken over by the state. And look at the AMCA scores. Now, one of those scores show that we met expectations. If you look at the chart from DESA, it was for 2022, I believe it's showing, it shows we almost, most of it, we didn't meet expectations. So it's difficult to see the money that we're spending to get an education for our youth to be successful. For me, it's been
Counselor, I don't think this is the place to argue about the state funding. I think if you want
Part of state funding, this has got to do with this, what Dr. Valar talked about. He brought up the fact of the money that was done, and I'm trying to go with that.
It's an amount of money that we are told by the state to provide.
And I understand that, Ms. Che. I understand that fully. I'm just responding to what Dr. Valar did. And this isn't an attack of Dr. Valar or anything like that. It's just that I look at the amount of money we're feeling. We're into this for this long, and the reports shows a rosy picture. But when, at the end of the year, it's not that way. So I would just hope that as, as we progress further, that the turnaround plan works. One question I do have is, as part of this turnaround plan is for the school committee to take over the running of the, of the school system. Do we have an idea when, when this can take place? Or when we're going to start the process to educate and slowly turn this thing over?
I can answer that. We're in contact.
I direct this to Dr. Valar, please.
It will be the same answer, Dr. Valar?
Sure. So there was a meeting held last spring with representatives of the school committee and the town council. Russell Johnson, the associate commissioner, met with the group. I was also present. And he promised to support the school committee and its development, and is currently working on identifying a means of doing so. And so that is, the intention is to build school capacity, a capacity of the school committee so that they will have the understanding and knowledge to run the schools. The turnaround plan is two more years from October, and the commissioner then will assess the situation. And he is the sole person in the state of Massachusetts that can determine if we exit or if we need an additional time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Just have one quick question.
Yes.
Dr. Valar, does the district still provide for attendance to the MASCE conference?
Yes, we support the school committee members in attendance, yes.
Okay. Awesome.
Just reach out either to me or Don Miko, and we'll help facilitate anything you need.
I would encourage all of you that haven't attended this conference or would like additional training, it's in November, to reach out to Dr. Valar, because it's an awesome experience for one. But it's, it's like college crammed into like three days for how to be a school committee member. But it is extremely effective. And it's full of information. It can help you interpret this giant book that we just received tonight. But I would encourage you, everyone who hasn't attended, to register and get with Dr. Valar in his office to ensure that you can attend the conference. It's in November.
Okay. Our next meeting is October the 10th at 7:00 PM here in the McKinnon Chambers. Okay. We'll adjourn the meeting at 8:38.